All right. Those wishing to address the board during public comment agenda item 5.03 must turn in a public comment form before the start of the meeting at 5 o'clock PM. Any form submitted after the session is started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Are there any public comment forums before we get started? It needs to be turned in. If you have them, go ahead and hand them over to Holly. Nope, all right. Well, it is 5:00 PM on Monday, April 15th, 2024. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, President Vice President Campbell, Director Barnes, Director Ed Scorn, Director Whitfield, Student Representatives Laura Wittenberg and Sophia Willett, Superintendent Sean Woodward, District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. President Bumpus will not be in attendance this evening. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We're happy to have you join us. Hopefully, everybody had a wonderful spring break. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any forms submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. We have no changes or late adds to the agenda, and we'll move on to Agenda Item 3.04, Review of the Agenda. And I was our 3.05 approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda dated April 15th, 2024?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated April 14th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll give that one to Chuck. All right, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, agenda item has passed 4-2-0. All right, moving on to agenda item 4.01, Staff Recognition, Employees of the Month. Director Ed Scorn? You have our first one.
All right, the Monroe School District Employee Honor Roll is our staff recognition program in recognizing staff members for exemplifying the Monroe commitment through their service to students, staff, families, and the community. Anyone can nominate an employee for the honor roll through the online form found on our website. At the end of each month, all nominations are reviewed and two employees are selected as employees of the month, one certificated employee and one classified employee. All nominees are recognized on our website and received certificates. Twenty-three incredible employees were nominated to the employee honor roll, which is amazing. And we'd like to take a few minutes to recognize the two employees who are selected as the March employees of the month. The classified employee of the month is Jamie Peterson. Is Jamie Peterson happen to be here or on Zoom? All right, well, we'll still acknowledge Jamie here. Jamie is a TK Para educator at Frank Wagner Elementary. This is Jamie's first year as a para, and she has proven to be an invaluable member of our transition to kindergarten team. Her enthusiasm for professional development is evident through her proactive approach to seeking feedback and consistently striving for improvement. One of Jamie's admirable qualities is her openness to feedback. She actively seeks guidance from her peers, willingly incorporates suggestions, and consistently demonstrates a genuine desire to enhance her practices. This is not only, this not only contributes to her personal and professional development, but also fosters a collaborative and supportive environment within our team. Jamie has excelled in building strong and meaningful relationships with our students. Her ability to connect with each child on a personal level creates an atmosphere of trust and security within her classroom. The positive impact of these relationships is evident in the joy and enthusiasm our students exhibit daily. Thank you very much, Jaylee, and congratulations.
Okay, and moving on to our certificated employee of the month, we have Carrie Erickson. Miss Carrie here? Come on up, Carrie. All right, Carrie, I have the honor of reading your nomination. Carrie is a teacher at Monroe High School, for those who don't know. Carrie goes above and beyond to support all students in her classes at Monroe High School. She cares deeply about the successes of students with IEPs, students receiving multilingual support, and students in general education. She does a fantastic job of providing accommodations and modifications for everyone in her classes. She is attentive to each of her students' needs and will plan or prep ahead of time accordingly to make sure everyone in the class has an opportunity to learn. Keep up the great work, Carrie. Thank you so much for all that you do to recognize every single one of our students and make sure that all students, no matter the background or anything that's going on, are receiving the best education possible in the Monroe School District. We truly appreciate you.
She's pulling teacher teams, et cetera, as well. So she's a big part of our increased movement when it comes to building a professional learning community culture for our district as well. So thank you, Carrie, for that.
As a parent of an MHS student, thank you. That's awesome. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 4.02. The Monroe Arts Council Quarterly Update, and we have for our presenter, I believe, Vice President of Finance Connie Goss. Hi, Connie.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board. I, I was here last December for our annual report, and at that time, you all asked us to update you quarterly for the rest of this year since we're coming up against the expiration of our American Rescue Plan grant. So I'm here, and we have some pretty good progress to report. First, I'll just cover a couple of things just for the record. Our board and officers have changed since last September. We had elections, so here's our updated information. And I also want to give a shameless plug for some of the events that we've been holding at the Wagner recently and plan to do for the rest of the year. We have been really, really busy in there already this year. We had a fantastic run of Chitty Chitty Bang Bang produced by the Cascade Community Theater of Duval. And if you missed it, I'm sorry, it was really fun. It had some of the greatest props ever. We had a fantastic free concert by our Monroe Community Band just a couple of weeks ago. It was really, truly excellent. We've had an enormous, all-day-long professional awards event from an Indian professional women's group out of Redmond came up. We had another Indian Dance School recital. And coming up this coming weekend, we're really excited to be hosting an evening of Native culture, so the other Indian culture. And that will be spearheaded by Mars Miller of the Sky Valley Indian Education Parent Organization. So we're going to be having some tremendous music and storytelling and cultural events going on this coming Saturday evening, so I hope you can attend. We've got the Frank Wagner Elementary Kids are going to be doing the Aristocrat Cats, which ought to be really fun. We've got musicals coming up, Sky Performing Arts, more dance recitals, another band concert, more outside renters from the Indian Dance Schools in Redmond. We're having two sessions of Drama Summer Camp this year because last year was so successful and very well received. And then this fall, Sky Performing Arts is going to be doing Little Women, so that's going to be great. So, and we're still booking events, so the calendar is going to continue to fill out. So, moving on to the project, that's what I know everybody really wants to hear about, and we are happy to tell you that things are really moving now. Our permit was approved in February for the whole project. We don't have funding for the whole project yet, but the permit is in place and all the plans are done. After the permit was acquired, our consulting architect Joel Neme put together the bidding documents. He has been a tremendous asset to this project, and so he got that. That was a huge hurdle for us to get over. We've been working with the city as well, keeping them informed of our progress, and they had furnished us with a list of contractors from their small works roster. So when we published the bidding documents, which we published on the Builders Exchange website in Everett, and then we emailed, I think it was 50 or 60 contractors on this list who were, we kind of narrowed down the list to contractors that seemed like a good fit for this project. And we had really good response, and we also published in the legal section of the Everett Herald. And we had six contractors sign up on the website, and they all showed up. And on Friday, we had a sort of a site visit, pre-bid meeting. And so six contractors, and we walked them through the building. Adam Denny came over and helped us, so they've been able to go through the building and see where they're going to have to hook up plumbing and connect to electrical and all these things. So, as of right now, we're answering a few questions, providing a little supplemental information for those contractors, and the bids are due on May 2nd. So those will be delivered in person at the Wagner. And once we've received those, we'll review them in person and then with the contractors present, and then we're going to take a couple of days to go through and really analyze what they've presented and get some guidance from the city so that we are in compliance with all their requirements. And then we'll make our selection, and we've been told that it's, I'm just going to verify this with Victor, we've been told that it's okay for us to be starting on June 1st. So, everybody seems in agreement that that's plenty of time for us to get the current scope of work finished in time for us to recoup the funds from the grant. So things are looking really good, and we feel like we're finally going to be able to do something concrete and tangible with the renovation. So, so the next question is, of course, well, what about the rest of the project? Because this is just the framing and the rough in plumbing, so there's a lot more to do after that. So what we did when we met with the contractors on Friday was we explained the situation to them and said, we're still seeking funding, but in order to seek funding, we have to know what our budget is. And so they are in the best position to tell us what the anticipated costs are going to be for the balance of the project. So we asked them, it's a lot of work, of course, to do pricing information like that, but we did invite them to optionally give us their good faith estimate of the balance of the project, broken out in a couple of sort of large category line items. So when we have that information, then we'll be able to really go forward and talk to some other potential funders and hopefully get the rest of it taken care of. So, I think that is pretty much the summary of what's going on. And I do think that we're going to have some help from those, those optional invitations. I think a couple of the contractors looked like they were interested in sort of establishing a relationship by helping us out by providing that information. So we'll see how that goes. So the current status, yeah, thank you, Jesse. So here's, here's where we are with the numbers. We have recouped a couple of payments for permitting, and we did have to do a rather expensive plumbing engineering study that had to come out of the grant. But nothing else should be coming out until we start getting invoices from contractors. So, you know, the big question will be, how are their numbers going to come in? We don't know. We developed the estimates that we based our grant proposal on. It's been two years now, almost. So those numbers are aging, and we're just going to have to wait and see whether there's enough. But we did structure our, our pricing request in such a way that we're going to have some options. So if they come in way high on something, we have, we have asked them to price it in base bid plus alternate one, alternate two, so that if there's something that's just going to be too expensive, we can take that out of the project and still move forward and recoup our grant funds. So that's, that's pretty much, that's pretty much all I have to tell you. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Any questions?
I just want to thank you for the update, and I'm really excited about all the stuff that's happening. I'm excited about all of the events and programs that we're hosting at George Wagner Center. It's just amazing to see that be such a big part of our community with all of the things that it offers. So I'm going to try to make it on April 20th. I'm really excited about that.
Yeah, I think that's going to be very special.
But I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you coming and speaking with us.
You're very welcome. Okay. Thank you so much, Connie. Appreciate it. All right. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 5.01, Consideration of Donations.
All right. Yes, we've got a couple of donations tonight. Bearcat Pride has been busy. So first donation, Bearcat Pride has donated to the Monroe School District a monetary grant in the amount of $1,000 for the sole and express purpose of covering the cost of materials and supplies to implement activities that will support the Monroe High School Link Crew in community-building activities. I love Link Crew. I did Link Crew when I was in high school. It's amazing. I'm so glad that we have it here. Thank you, Bearcat Pride, for that donation. The next donation is from Bearcat Pride, who has also donated to the Monroe School District a monetary grant in the amount of $2,000 this time for the sole and express purpose of covering the cost of reupholstering the benches in the weight room at Monroe High School. As someone who loves to lift weights, I know that's super important. Thank you so much for making sure that our weight room is equipped and has good upholstery on our benches. Bearcat Pride has also donated to the Monroe School District a monetary grant in the amount of $830 for the sole and express purpose of purchasing equipment for the Monroe High School Varsity Golf Team. Amazing, Bearcat Pride, you are killing it and doing so much for our students. The last one here, we have the Malby PTO has donated to the Monroe School District a monetary grant in the amount of $4,000 for the sole and express purpose of a field trip transportation. Thank you, Malby PTO, so much for funding the field trip transportation for our students to be able to go out and learn outside of the school building. We appreciate all that you do for our schools.
It's a lot this, the Bearcat Pride does for our school, which is really great, and I think that's something that provides such a huge need that we didn't have during COVID is opportunities for kids to get out and interact with one another and do extracurricular activities. The, what that does for the social emotional side of kids is humongous, and so this is really great to see, and a lot of hard work on a part of a lot of volunteers and parents, which is great, so wonderful. All right, and that leads us to Agenda Item 5.02, Our Student Representatives. We will present a report highlighting student activities throughout the district. Laura, Sophia, all right, take it away.
Okay, um, just coming back from spring break today, went on campus, and it looks like they did some gardening or landscaping, and it looks really nice, looks really open. But this Wednesday, we have the ACT Lunch Fundraiser, which will be pulled forth. Next Monday, we have the Earth Day Workshop, which means all classes are going to be canceled. And then state testing, May 6th through 10th, and then testing workshops next Tuesday and Thursday, which I believe is the 23rd and 25th. And then on May 13th, we have Spectacular Art and Science Fair, which, what? Oh, what day is it again? Okay, other place, April 26th, we have this spring square. I saw that the post read it, I see it out there. Thank you.
Hi, um, so we start state testing this week for the juniors, and the next week it will be the sophomores doing state testing, and I'm pretty sure we get late start, which I think everybody's really excited about because we've been wanting that during state testing. And then the crew is hosting an Earth Day cleanup next week around the school. And today for sports, boys soccer and girls tennis will be going against Marysville Pilchuck, and then girls softball has a game against Shorecrest. Tomorrow, boys baseball is against Marysville Pilchuck, and then track has a meet against Shorecrest and Acton every Thursday.
Awesome. Do you guys have any questions for our student representatives?
What was the best thing you did over spring break?
I ate a lot of sugar, which isn't good for track, but I don't regret it. Um, I work seven to 3:30 every day, so didn't really have time for a lot of things, but it's fun.
Hey, buddy, that's good. Did you guys, you guys, was it hard to get up this morning and have to get back into your regular routine schedule? But you did it, and you're here.
Um, well, I got to wake up late today because I just, or now I'm back in the school schedule, which was at nine, so.
So that's actually better than during spring break.
Yeah, because I woke, I was waking up at like six, five.
And you work for your family, right?
Yeah.
So they're not going to make you work from seven to nine, and then you go to school?
No.
Okay, that's good. Don't give them ideas. Awesome. And then Sophia, thank you for mentioning that the dates is why I pulled this up. There's an email for parents as well. MHS testing dates, April 15th to 19th is the Washington Comprehensive Assessment of Science. So 11th grade students will take that, and, and then you have other students who will have late start, so make sure that for family members to read their emails. And then April 29th and 30th is the SBA for English Language Arts, and that's going to be 10th grade and 11th, and any 11th or 12th grade students needing to meet graduation. And then May 20th and 21st is the SBA for math, and that's 10th grade students and any 11th, 12th grade students needing to meet graduation path requirements as well. So making sure that we check because there's several different dates and different things coming up, and so it's not late start for everybody. That's the important thing, so you got to make sure that you're communicating with the school. If you have any doubts, make sure you contact that school as well. So, yeah, my son was actually really excited about it. He's a freshman, so none of these apply. He's like, this is great. I'm like, not next year, though, not next year. Awesome. Well, thank you so much, ladies, appreciate that. And that brings us to Agenda Item 5.03, Public Comment, and we have no public comments turned in for today, so we can move on to Agenda Item 6.01. Our, into our business section, and it is, For Consideration of Revisions is our first reading to Board Policy 3207, Prohibition of Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Policy for that as well. So we can get the discussion going. I think we need to start off with a motion and a second, then we can do discussion. Is that correct? Make sure I do that right? This is a first answer. We don't have to do any, any voting on this one. Awesome. Well, and look at that, our HR Director, Dan is already up there for any questions. Dan, can you give us an overview of the update of this?
Yeah, it's really harassment, intimidation, and bullying policy's always been about students. It's about protecting students, and, and you know, we won't go into the reasons why, but this is crucially important to all school districts to make sure our kids feel safe and respected and comfortable at school. These policy revisions are really just to really spell out that this is about students. These policies in the RCW reflected here weren't designed to protect community members, staff members, and so on. It is specifically students. So most of the changes you see in here are made just to really reflect that so that there's not misunderstanding. We have other policies that protect coworkers, like civility policies and such, but this particular policy and the procedures that accompany it are about students. So really, as you go through, down at the bottom of the first page, that highlighted in green, that also spells out what this policy is not designed to do. But the rest of the changes really just talk about that it's towards a student, that it's protecting a student, that it's for students. The only other big change in here, if you go to page three, the, there is some language in here about false reporting, and it is letting us know that, that people who false report intentionally harassment, intimidation, bullying could be subject to discipline. It does spell out that if it was with good intent, if it was just a mistake, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about malicious, wrong report. So that's the other addition here.
I appreciate that, because that was one of my questions when I first looked at this, and I noticed this is a, and for, I think for our community members as well, when they look at our, if they go into Board Docs and look at our policies, the 3,000 section is about students.
It is, and it's always been about students, and it's just, but there's a lot of confusion about this. I'm really glad to see this change and WASDA recommended the change because, you know, we'll have somebody come in and say, you know, so-and-so harassed me, and it was like, well, you're not a student, that policy's not about you. But I think this will go a long way to clearing that up for people so that when they see this policy, they'll, they'll understand that this is designed to protect students.
And that we still have those policies in place for staff members.
We do. We have our civility policy for staff-to-staff interactions, for students to, like student-to-teacher interactions, we have our student discipline policy if they were to do things to community members or staff members. So there's other things that govern that, but this, this policy and procedure and all of its guidelines are about protecting students.
Would it be possible to point to those other policies? Because in the bottom of the first page, as you mentioned, yeah, if you specifically call out, this is not about employees, volunteers, parent legal guardians, it'd be great if you said, see policy X, Y, and Z for those.
Yeah, just on the, not quite the last page, but almost where we have the cross references to other things, maybe that might be helpful to have that down there where deals with employees.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and especially the civility policy, because that's the most common one that comes in. And it's not like we have a lot of mistreatment from staff to staff, but when you have 700 employees, you do, or whatever our number is exactly, but you do have from time to time, you, how much is it? Well, you're counting subs, too. But yeah, when you, when you have that many, occasionally, you're going to have somebody mistreat somebody else, and so that is a common one that they go here and they cite this, and, and we redirect them to there. So that, that would be a nice addition.
Yeah.
Good suggestion, thank you.
Any other questions?
So the policy 3207, is there a 37, 3207P?
There is.
There is? Okay.
And it, most commonly, we would revise the policy first, get board approval on that, and then we'd bring the procedure in line to reflect it, but that wouldn't come before you.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Dan, I do appreciate adding the line on there as well, and just got on the screen of just the, the abuse of it as well. Is that, no, that's not that section. There it is, thank you, Jesse. Just the, basically, the people are not abusing policy to weaponize it towards people as well, which I really appreciate that, that brings it in line for, this is the purpose that this is, it's serious, but then to not be used as a weapon towards other people also, because then it just turns into the same issue. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, thank you so much, Dan, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, and the next one also doesn't require any voting or action because it's a first reading for consideration of revisions of Policy 6111, which is tuition. And Superintendent Woodward, can you, can you explain a little bit about this? Because I remember you and I had a meeting, and I was, the idea of public education and tuition becomes very confusing, I think, for a lot of people, not fully understanding what this is in reference to.
Yeah, you bet. Yeah, it's something that I actually haven't come across in, in the time I've been doing this job either. So this is a first. Holly's been doing a fabulous job of just cleaning up all of our policies, and this is one that WASDA is recommending for us to adjust based on some things that have changed at the state level. We have the policy, but it's discretionary, so it's not a policy that you even have to have if you decided not to. But with that said, there's an RCW that's referenced here, 20A.225.220, that states that any Board of Directors may make agreements with adults choosing to attend school. that states that any board of directors may make agreements with adults choosing to attend school and may charge the adults reasonable tuition. That's not something that I've ever experienced. I asked Brenda today in her time here, has she experienced that? And she said, no, uh, not at all. So I really couldn't think of an, of a case that that would really be appropriate. Uh, the, the piece that I think that was really important for, uh, WASDA to note for districts who want to have this policy was that tuition will be charged to all persons age twenty one or older. It used to say the model policy who wish to attend the regular educational program. They're recommending it to change to af, those students twenty one or older, or persons age twenty or older after approval by the district to attend the regular educational program. Um, and then the bottom part is, uh, what's more relevant to how we operate schools, uh, here is that additionally tuition and special fees may be charged to offset the maintenance and operation costs for summer school uh, or other optional student vacation period programs. It used to have full day kindergarten in there because as you probably remember, that was a, used to be a, a fee based program in, in, in districts. Uh, so since we don't have that anymore, that would be stricken. Um, again, this is a policy that you can choose to have or not. Really, the twenty one and older pieces aren't relevant to anything that this district's done in recent memory anyways, so.
And I understand that. I think the age twenty one as well as, as a public, public school district, you know, we're required to provide education if people live within our, within our school district up to. There are exceptions that get you up to age twenty one with certain IP's and, and things like that. And I think that there's maybe rare exceptions that are extremely rare that this law does exist for a reason that that would ever exceed that, that it's possible to say, well, we're not getting any funding and so there's a way to recoup those. But I guess my question is do you have a recommendation that we even keep this policy if this is not something we even have precedent for in our district?
I mean, I think the only, the only thing that I could see would be, um, even though it does say attend the regular educational program, so I, I was thinking GEDs or something like that if we, if we were to offer that, but that's not part of the regular educational program anyways. So, I mean, I don't really see a, a need to it, uh, to have this, uh, in, in your board policy. It is, is, and I think Brenda's been here the longest. David, can you think of any reason? Just that we've already covered the special IP's through birth to twenty one?
Well, the, the second paragraph after additionally, that applies to all students, not just twenty one and over, right?
Exactly. So you might just keep a certain section if you didn't wanna have, uh, you reference any of the twenty one and older.
Do we ever charge tuition or what, what programs?
Um, I, I, it used to be full day kindergarten here. Um, I'm assuming this district had full day kindergarten pay to go. Uh, I don't believe any of our, in summer schools in recent memory, have we charged? That could be something that we, we could do in the future, though, if we wanted to.
What's this other optional student vacation period programs?
I think that just means it wouldn't have to just be, it could be any, anytime a student is at home for vacation, right? So during holiday breaks, we could have programs here that kids could pay tuition to attend.
So I guess that'd be a reason to keep it, just, just to have in our back pocket.
That's exactly what I'm saying is maybe this is something, it's, it's better to have it and not have to use it than not have it needed.
I'm, I'm assuming you'd wanna know if we were serving twenty two year olds here, twenty one or older, right?
Yes, definitely.
Even though we can, we won't do that without making a big deal about it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Superintendent Ward. All right, moving on to agenda item six point zero three. Adoption of the five year strategic plan.
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors adopt the five year strategic plan for the years two thousand twenty four to two thousand twenty nine.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors adopt the five year strategic plan for the years twenty twenty four, twenty twenty to twenty twenty nine. Discussion.
Was that, uh, extra indicator added in that we talked about?
Yes. Uh, let's see, it should be under goal area one, the last two bullets. Increased percentage of graduates who have taken at least one high school honors advanced placement or dual credit course. And then increased percent of graduates who have scored at least a three or higher on at least one advanced placement exam. The other thing to keep in mind is uh, this doesn't, adopting this doesn't prevent you from adding something this summer when we talk about these performance indicators and share, uh, some of our baseline data. So you can, you can always add as well.
Yeah. And I, and I wanna, I wanna point out as well, cuz we talked about this in our last meeting. And then, you know, Sean, in our meeting, we had a conversation as well, the indicators of the percentages of the growth points. We still are working on the data, but we have the trajectory saying, we wanna move in this direction. And then we'll find out how much we need to move for realistic points once we have hard data to move in that direction, but it doesn't change the, the goals that we have of saying, we want to improve in these areas. We'll find out how much we need to improve by, once we have better data to, to do that, which makes us have realistic goals, which that's why I have no problem voting on this because of that. I also wanna say, you know, Aaron was not here last time we met, but I know you and your team have worked really, really hard on putting this together to put it in a very digestible and presentable way. There's a lot here. So I know you guys put a lot of work into that. So thank you to you and Tamara and your team for working so hard on that. Appreciate you guys.
Agreed. It's very well laid out. It's very, very beautiful.
This is way better than, than the Google Doc that I first looked at.
That scared you a little bit, I do remember that.
It was a lot. It was a lot, but this is, it, what I love about this, though, is that for our community, this is still a ton of information, but it's put into a way that is very digestible and, and it has the information there, but in a way that's saying you can go deep into it if you need to, but it's also saying you can take the five thousand foot, you would say, I understand where we're going. So it makes it very usable and that's, that's a huge piece and not an easy task. All right, there is a motion and a second. Back. That the Monroe School District Board of Directors adopt the five year strategic plan for the years twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, motion passes four two zero. That moves us on to the consent agenda. All right. To agenda item seven point ten, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approval items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
Is there a second? Second. There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated April fifteen, twenty twenty four. On favor, raise your hand. All right, motion passes four to zero. Eight point zero, uh, living on a, a gen item eight point zero one superintendent update.
All right, so, uh, I've been sharing attendance data because I can every month. And I've mentioned before that part of the, our strategic plan is to have more checks and balances on student learning so that we can do this on a monthly basis as well. We're not there yet, but we can get there. But we do collect attendance data, so I, I put in front of you, uh, this evening an overall school attendance, uh, comparison last year to this year. Uh, you can see that every month we've shown improvement and that's directly correlated with our staff being really diligent about doing things differently to get different results. So I really appreciate the work they've done. I really appreciate, at the district and the school level. And our, our, uh, families and our students, uh, for really stepping up and, and, and attending school more regularly. The, it has created a little bit of stress for our families because we are really following the, the laws to a T when it comes to reaching out to parents and sending letters, et cetera. So, uh, we're sending out a letter within the next week or so thanking our parents. Remind, reminding them that, you know, we're not really just trying to ding y'all. We, we have to follow the law when it comes to students attending school. Not just because it's the law, but because it makes a difference, a big difference for us, uh, student well being, well being, learning, et cetera. And reminding them that we understand by all means, keep your child home if they need to be home, that there are certain uh, situations that warrant kids staying home. So, uh, but, but I know it's been a little stressful on school staff because uh, people feel bad when they get letters, uh, home from the school about attendance. So it's always just a balance of we really wanna support our families and do what we can do and follow the law and all those things. Uh, with all this, all that said, all of that work is making a difference and, uh, that letter will go out to parents and hopefully they'll, I think they'll receive that well. So hopefully April, May and June, we'll see similar at least a percent, uh, growth above and beyond last year at this time. Uh, James asked last, last week, I believe, about our, or maybe it was you Jeremiah, about our cell phone policy and, uh, the consideration. And moving forward, what that's going to look like, or if we even have a cell phone policy, and I just wanted to go over it quickly because a couple people, people do pay attention to our board meetings at times and I, and somebody asked me about this. Uh, once I heard about it last week or the week before. So here's what we're going to do. Here's the timeline. Uh, the week of May first, this is a little bit different than what I stated in a board update cuz we need a little more time for this. We're going to send a letter out and survey our parent staff and six twelve students asking for input regarding a potential board policy addressing not just cell phone usage in schools, but smartwatches, I was reminded. Uh, as well as, uh, uh, headphones. So basically just wanting feedback, input. What do you think? Are boards considering these things? Uh, what's on your mind about this? May thirteenth, we have a board workshop scheduled, so we'll review all the survey data together on May thirteenth. We'll present that to you and then we'll also share some sample policies from across the state. You have, I think it's Peninsula in front of you now. This is just, this is their, uh, board policy, not their procedure. The procedure was kind of lacking when it, when it came to, well, what do you do about it if students just are generally just utilizing a phone? Uh, they did reference certain incidences of utilizing a phone for, uh, harassment purposes and appropriate things and so on and so forth. But I'll get a couple more policies for y'all. Uh, May twenty eighth, we should, uh, be able to present a first draft of the board policy based on the survey input and then whatever you discuss, discuss at the, uh, that workshop session. Or we could decide to have another workshop on it if you, if you think we need more time, uh, for that. We should be able to June tenth and June twenty fourth finalize some board policy if we decide to have one, if you decide to have one. Uh, June twenty fifth, uh, at the latest, we'd be communicating new policy to staff, students and families. And then, uh, early August, we'd be working with our administrative, administrators around implementing and then sending out reminders to our families early August and late August if we make any significant, uh, changes. As, as a reminder, and this may be a little bit redundant, but I think I, I should continue to share this. This was one of the hottest topics that came up during focus groups. It wasn't necessarily students having phones. It was just the rampant use of them during the, 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 the school day. Um, and it wasn't just our, uh, parents that brought it up, staff were bringing it up all the time. And some of our students have as, as well during focus groups. So we have, but we wanna circle back and get more input from more people so you can consider that on, on May thirteenth. So there's the timeline for you.
In that questionnaire, will you specify that, um, yes, the students will have it in case of emergency, you know, if we do implement a policy, et cetera, et cetera. Or they'll be able to use it before and after school and during lunch. Just hope people are informed on what they're voting on or giving their opinion on.
I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll keep it fairly general. Uh, we do know the emergency piece will be big for folks for sure. We, and we could absolutely put that in cuz that's just like, hey, no, of course, if something were going on, this kid would need to use the phone. Um, I'd be hesitant to put anything about you, you, using them at lunch, use them in the hallways because you all might decide as a board that, that, that's something you want, would want to consider. Some districts have done flat out bans even at lunchtime. Uh, this district did not. They said, hey, no, before school, after school, in the hallways at lunch, it's totally fine. I think I'd probably, well, we're gonna use, uh, thought exchange, so it'll be, people can just get their thoughts out there and, and I'm sure that will come up though.
I mean, I even, I picked up my son today for a orthodontist appointment. I was like, do I text him or not? And I was thinking about this exact thing because the last time I came to pick him up early for an appointment. Uh, they're like, oh, you could just send him a text. And they're like, no, don't text him. And I said, well, what is the, and I was thinking about today's meeting. And they were saying, well, it, last time it was probably because he was at lunch or it was, he was in the, in between the hallway, but if he's in class, then, you know. And so that was an interesting thing to think about. And then also I was wondering about, are there other instances of exceptions? And this would probably be in the procedure section of like, are there times where it is appropriate to use it in class of, a lot of times students will use their calculator or there's some that they're using their Chromebook dies and they're trying to do something on canvas or there's, there's a, there is, there is an actual educational purpose behind that. And there's our discretionary times that we would say, hey, teacher, you know those moments of saying, yes, this is an okay time to use your phone for this thing, but it's for this thing and not to get on Spotify and put your earbuds in and tune everything out.
Yeah. So I'll make sure that we get, uh, a lot of different samples that incorporate all kinds of different ideas for sure for you to look at.
Okay. And then one question I had circling back to your other update item of the attendance. I was wondering if maybe, and this, this may be later into the fall, once we have more testing data. But looking at some of I think are grades and then also, I don't know if SBA data would probably be a realistic correlation, but at least this year's grades looking at, okay, we've had, let's, let's just say for, um, April, May and into June, our attendance continues to be a positive trend in the upward direction. Every single month, we've actually had positive movement. Have we also seen that with our grades at least of, cuz that was the big thing, more time in class, the more successful they're going to be. Can we do some sort of a data carousel looking at saying, are these correlative at least to, to look at that kind of? And that may be a, a summer or a fall thing to look at last year's data and our student success as well.
Yeah, that'd be great for sure. And we, we'll be looking at that anyhow, since we uh, have both growth goals and academic achievement goals that we set at the beginning of this year. So we can compare that with the attendance for both years as well.
Okay. Awesome. All right. Any other questions? All right, moving on to agenda item nine point zero one, board reports or comments. Will they go first?
For part of these comments, I was gonna Google something really quick cuz I couldn't remember the name of the county executive and I go, don't do it. So, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, I went to a Chamber of Commerce this last weekend. They had a, an update from the state of Monroe. Jeffrey Mary, Jeffrey Thomas gave a report. And then the following week or the following month, uh, the county executive blank is gonna be given an update, the state of the county. And I've, uh, been in contact with the chamber to get in contact with Holly to arrange where illustrious superintendent can give a, uh, an overview of the strategic plan, which I thought would be, would be fitting. And also I'd like to arrange, uh, a presentation to the, uh, the city council who meet here, by the way. And, uh, also talk about the strategic plan because the city and the school district are so closely linked and it is the community. And I think that'd be fitting also for everybody on, on page cuz it's exciting. We have a plan. We have a destination. Uh, the other thing is this weekend, it is the, we're gonna be celebrating the twenty fifth anniversary of the miracle, Miracle League, which is a a, a baseball field that the Rotary initiated and in partnership with the city of Monroe to get, to get funding. You know, to give you some perspective, when I, we were also doing the students of the month, we've been having them, uh, speak at each of the Rotary meetings. And a couple of the students were saying, you know, I can't believe it's been four years. It's gone so fast. Well, guess what? Twenty five years ago, I didn't think you guys were born. We started the Rotary, the Rotary League and yes, you were born. But the, uh, how fast that's, that's how, how fast that's been during that period of time. We had fundraisers, we had a, a little Rotary trailer that we towed behind a truck, sold hot dogs and at different events. So it's really gonna be special, uh, gonna be all kinds of food and uh, games and prizes. And we also have, uh, some tents. some tents we're getting for over the, over the bleachers, which they don't have now, which we tried, as a sub note, we tried to get approval to have covers over the bleachers. And our Department of Parks will not allow that, not allow them to be permitted. That was something we were at our last Rotary meeting, we found out about. Anyway, so a lot of good things. Great community involvement. So.
Thank you, Director Whitfield. Just to make sure I did look them up because I, I remember Dave Summers is our county executive and he is a Monroe resident. So he may be in our next school board meeting, just to make, just so you do know. And also I was alive twenty-five years ago and I do remember nineteen ninety-nine and we were all worried about Y two K. Put that one in there. Director Barnes?
Okay. I'm going to piggyback first off of Chuck's a little bit. The Students of the Month for Rotary. I made some notes and just an incredible group of students that we have from Monroe High School. So Ryan Miller. They, they all talked about their community service experience and, and what it was that they were doing. And Ryan Miller, he helped out with our Unified Sports with the basketball program, first ever time doing it. And he just said it was a life-changing experience, right? It was a magical evening. I was there. It was phenomenal. But just to hear him talk about that and how it impacted his life. Yeah, that was, that was incredible. Then we have Monica Handaval. I'm so sorry if I'm getting your last name wrong. I may have heard it wrong too in the meeting, but her big thing that she volunteered with was the Equity Institute. And what an impact that made on her to go down to middle school and deal with the kids there and be a leader in that when she felt like there was change that needed to be made and she wanted to make it. We also have Luke McCullough and he's helped out with Miracle League and he talked about what a huge impact that has made on his life. We also have Ethan Hogan and he is one of our varsity baseball players and a big thing that he loves to help out with are the Kid Days, the camps that they do for baseball at Monroe High School. And he says that that is always just a blast and that's really what kind of fills his bucket. There's Justice Fundston and he volunteers at his church with MOPS and Kids Sunday School. So he just talked about what a joy it is to be able to be there for the kids in the community in that way. And then last but not least, it was Leila Persons and she has helped out with the Casey Edelbrock five K, which is coming up, May fifth, I will be there. And she also has helped out a lot with Take the Next Step. So just a huge thank you to these seniors in our high school, in our community who continue to step up and serve and be lights that show others it to look outside themselves and to give back because it's not always just about you. It's about other people and it's amazing what those experiences can do for you just as a human being. So I've truly enjoyed hearing from our seniors in that respect. I also want to highlight multicultural night. So I went to that, which it was incredible. They had tons of different tables. This was the second year that they've done it. And just a shout out to the incoming ASB president, Hallie Pickens. She's an incredible individual who kind of has helped start this and keep it going. And she was there, her parents were there. She was really excited to tell me a little bit more about it. But I just want to highlight some of the students that I got to talk to and some of the things that I got to do. So I got to meet Denham, who's the president of our Black Student Union. He told me all about Kenya. He's going back there for spring break. Some of his favorite things that he loves to do there, what he loves most about his home country. And it just, it was incredible to get to meet him. He's an amazing young man and to learn more about that. I also got to meet Hope from Hawaii. And she can hula and she makes the most amazing butter mochi. So I truly enjoyed getting to talk with her, hear about plans for later in life, taste her butter, butter mochi and reminisce about the things that we both love about Hawaii. There was also a table, they had homemade Brazilian cheesy bread that was fresh out of the oven. Oh my gosh, I've never quite tasted Brazilian cheesy bread so good. And she was telling me all about the home that her mother was born in and came from. It was this really small town. And she said, one of the things that she remembers most about it is the cows that roam free in the streets. And she just has never experienced anything else like that. And that's one of the things that she really loves about this town when she gets to go back and have the opportunity to visit. I also got to talk with Emma. She had a table about Palestine because that's where her dad is from. They had fresh homemade hummus. They had date cookies. It was absolutely incredible. The food was so good. And it was really neat to hear about her experiences going back and visiting Palestine, the things that she loved most about visiting. And then Natalia, Sean, we got to talk with her. She's one of our student leaders and she was there and she had pecan cookies that were incredible. So I got to catch up with her a little bit and ask her how things were going and try her pecan cookies, which I loved. It, it was incredible. They had a cultural cahoot. They had the Lotteria, GeoGuessr, a lot of different things. So this comes around every year. I just encourage you, next year, go experience some different cultures, some different places, different food. Talk to our students. They are just a wealth of knowledge about so many different things. And I think that's what I love most is just talking to people and hearing and learning and just partaking. So definitely would encourage you to do that. Also, I want to give another shout out to Clint McGowan. Not only is he one of our JROTC students at Sky Valley, he's also, he just got his Eagle Scout and he had to do a project. The project that he chose was benches for Sky Valley. And he made them so that they would match the benches that were there. This is something that parents have been wanting so that we could sit and watch our kids out on the playground because they always need to be supervised. But this was not last week, but the week before. And so Director Whitfield and Sean and I were able to go as he presented these to Sky Valley. And then we got to pick them up and move them to where they were going to be. So I, I just want to thank Clint again for being thoughtful and for helping to provide for one of our schools. So don't forget, also April twentieth, besides the Miracle League baseball, we've got the Sky Valley Indian Education Center Evening of Native Culture. I love native culture. So I'm definitely going to try to go to that. And then April twenty-sixth is the Spring Soiree at Sky Valley from twelve to three. And I will also be there. We're going to have slam ball and a bunch of other stuff. So that should be a pretty fun evening of trying to help kids or not evening, afternoon of helping kids connect and make friendships. And just helping students feel more like they belong. So that's all I've got for tonight.
Let's have one quick thing. Just a reminder, the transition to kindergarten applications are due a month from today. So if you know anybody who lives in the district with a three-year-old, please let them know and let's get the word out.
Thank you. That's awesome. And hopefully everybody was able to get some rest over spring break. And I know for some kids, it's also a hard time when they're away from school because that is their, their safe place, their best place. So hopefully coming back as well has been really great for a lot of our staff and our students and we're able to continue. We are on the downhill stretch for this school year. Can you believe it? I have some friends I was talking to, coworkers actually, and friends that have seniors and they're just, they're just buzzing. So just thinking about that of, there's a lot of to wind up for and it's exciting, isn't it? Awesome. Well, that's great. Looking forward to getting back into the swing of things. But all that said, we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting. It is five fifty-eight P M.